I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, April 26, 2017, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with a review of the minutes. Any additions, corrections, deletions? Everybody had a chance?
Move to approve the minutes.
Greg moves to approve. Is there a second?
No, second.
And Dennis seconds, thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes carry. Is there any correspondence from staff?
None from staff this evening.
Okay, thanks, bye. Transportation Commission, I noticed that the meeting's canceled for tomorrow, but I don't know, Joel, if you could give us an update of the previous one?
The Transportation Commission met two weeks ago. Thursday, the, there was a presentation by our representative from Idaho Highway Department talking about the various projects that they're going to be doing over this coming summer. Between the projects the city of Moscow is doing and the projects that the state is doing locally, it's going to be a summer where you can't get there from here.
Of course you are.
Yeah. We did have a presentation relative to easement vacation on South Gate Number Three. This, I believe, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we must approve the subdivision on that, and I believe we recommended the requirement of several easements for pads to, this is a subdivision immediately to the south of what I remember as the Slurpin' Burp, I'm not sure what it's currently called, south of the Rubisson Park Road to the east of town. The council approved the subdivision, but did not require that the developer pay for the required improvements on the paths. Both paths would have been quite steep and would have required stairways. The Transportation Commission was asked for their opinion on the vacation, possible vacation of those rights of way. After discussion, the Transportation Commission concluded that with the action by the council to not require the developer to make the improvements, it's unlikely that they would ever be improved beyond a possible flip or slide.
But snowboarding, you won't?
Right. So, we recommended vacation of the rights of way.
Any questions for Joel? Okay, thank you.
The next meeting will be the second Thursday in next month, and I have not yet seen an agenda.
So, the next point on our agenda is called Open Microphone, and it's an opportunity for anyone in the public to come forward and talk to us about whatever might be on your mind related to land use issues that's not currently on the agenda before us. Scott, do you have anything you want to talk about? No? Okay, well, there is absolutely no one else in the audience, so I guess we'll move on. Okay. So, we move to Item Five, Preliminary Development Review for 201 West Sixth Street, popularly known as the Sangria Development, and Mike's going to give a presentation. Right?
I think you may have the wrong agenda.
What?
Are you looking at the agenda?
It came in the packet. Oh, I'm looking at, ah, no, I apologize. I am not looking at the agenda. I am looking at the minutes.
Do you want mine?
No, I got it. I just turned it upside down. Roll back on that. Okay, so we, Item Six, we were okay so far because we followed, and I just didn't notice. This is a public hearing on legislative amendment of Title Four, Chapter Six, Off-Street Parking Requirements.
Thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. So, this is the Off-Street Parking Requirements Ordinance. We've been working on this for the last about a year. We'd originally gone through kind of the common considerations that jurisdictions typically have within their Off-Street Parking Requirements Ordinance, usually begins when the standards apply, you know, new uses, change of uses, alterations. They usually go through dimensions of stalls, the adjacent travel lanes, access points, so, you know, curb cuts that access the parking areas, what type of surfacing is required, mainly asphalt, concrete, but then allowing some type of other approved surfacing that may be non-impervious, that may allow some penetration of water into the ground, exterior screening, so landscaping requirements adjacent to the parking lot between that and maybe adjacent property, or it could be public streets, interior landscaping, commonly referred to as landscape islands, that would be the most common interior landscaping that you see, looking at shading, so tree requirements within parking lots in order to provide some shade, reduces heat island effect, also has some stormwater filtration aspects, looking at stormwater management, pedestrian facilities through those parking lots, locations on-site, so where those are located, you know, to the side of buildings, to the rear of buildings, but maybe not necessarily to the front of those in certain locations, and then quantity of stalls. So, usually you have minimum requirements, and then in some circumstances, some zones, you do have maximum requirements, which we do have in kind of the Legacy Crossing area. And then joint use parking provisions and those parking, parking facilities that are located off-site. So, the original intent when we started this off was, right now, the current section is really outdated. We have, it probably hasn't been updated for, you know, the whole section, maybe 20, 30 years, has a lot of inconsistencies, so we interchange terms throughout the document. So, we use parking lot, parking facility, parking space, parking area, and those are all, you know, similar terms, but they're used interchangeably throughout the section. So, we wanted to clarify that, wanted to provide some flexibility for joint, you know, off-street parking as well as joint use, looking at shifting some things from a conditional use permit where you needed to go to the Board of Adjustment to just the zoning administrator approval, and then restructuring some sections, there's some redundancies, and so it's just restructuring for ease of use, inserting illustrations to put, you know, to further convey what the point or what the requirements are within the chapter, and then to ensure greater consistency in how the requirements are administered, thinking about the internal landscape islands and how they've been administered in the past, to try to separate the bays, trying to move to a different direction in order to ensure landscape islands in more of a consistent fashion. So, this is just an example, you know, I just went through, we've kind of got these similar terms, parking area, parking lot, parking facility, parking space. We do have some definitions that need updating. These will come with our Use Table Amendment, so with titles, chapters one through four, we'll end up revising all the definitions within the zoning code, and so these are contained in Chapter 11. So, we'll end up amending those, and that'll be within the next month or two when we end up advancing with the Use Table Ordinance. So, we're not doing those as part of this amendment tonight. So, as you can see, you know, these, parking space, obviously, at some previous code amendment at some point in time, another definition got transposed over this one, this is not obviously a parking space, describes some other use that is in the definition section. So, some of these things we'll just need to clear up as part of that Use Table Ordinance. So, we went ahead and researched 10 other jurisdictions, so the commission reviewed parking requirements and parking sections and ordinances from those other 10. We had Boise Caldwell, Coeur d'Alene, Lewiston, Meridian, Missoula, Nampa, Pullman, Sandpoint, and Twin Falls. Staff went through the document, cleaned up a lot of those inconsistencies between terminologies. We reviewed all the sections and made recommended changes, so we went through and looked at all the other sample ordinances. There was a lot of commonalities within those, and we ended up changing quite a few things within our ordinance. And then we created the Parking Standards Advisory Committee, and they met three times, and it was in order to get some input from the public, you know, developers, contractors, engineers, attorneys, citizens, in order to gather some more input as, you know, people that typically work with these regulations, to give us some input on the proposed changes. And so, they had three meetings. One happened at the end of 2016, one was on January 25th of this year, and then the other one was on March 1st, 2017, and they came up with some really good recommendations, and the commission decided to advance a lot of those, actually all of them, that were recommended and incorporated them into the draft ordinance that's before you tonight. Just wanted to go through and recognize the people that served, they volunteered their time, we met those three meetings at noon. I promised that it'd be, that it wouldn't take longer than an hour, but most of these took about hour fifteen, hour and a half, and so, I'm just really appreciative, Scott's here from the committee, and just, you know, great thing to do to gather some good input, and we really got a lot of good input out of it. So, we had David Rock, who's a U of I horticulturalist, Rich Beebe, who's a local contractor, Scott's a civil engineer, Matt Decker is one of the landscape contractors here in town, Susan Wilson's a land use attorney, Victoria Seaver's a citizen, she's also on the Sustainable Environment Commission, and then from the P&amp;Z Commission, we had Wendy and Greg serve on this committee. So, taking a look at what our current requirements are, you know, so when they apply, new structure or use, change of use, expansion of use. So, we had, you know, we weren't messing with this section originally, we had a little bit of an issue with a Board of Adjustment meeting recently, where, I think I explained it last time, where they were interpreting this section to mean that every time a use goes into a, say, a new building, then you have to start from the beginning like it's a new building, and you have to put on all the required parking up to the current standards. And so, generally, how we do it is if you have an existing building and there's a use in there, and maybe it requires five parking spaces, but they don't have any on-site right now, so they'd be non-conforming. If another use were to go in there, and if it's like-for-like, so the one current use requires five, and the new use is five, they don't need to provide any parking because it currently doesn't have any parking. If there's a use that comes in that requires 10 parking spaces, then they just have to make up that difference. So, they don't, we don't go back and hit them for the entire 10, we just go back and require what the difference is between the previous use and the new use. So, in this circumstance, it'd be just requiring five spaces. And so, they were interpreting this to mean that every use that went, so every change of use was essentially a new use. And so, that, you know, the implications from that would be that, say you build a building and it was up to all the new parking lot standards last year, you had a new use go into that building, and we had just revised the parking lot standards like we're doing now, they would have to rip out all that new stuff they put in last year, and maybe widen the landscape buffers or whatever was changed as part of that ordinance. And it really just detracts from, you know, infill, it doesn't, it's not conducive to infill development, areas within, you know, surrounding the downtown area that, especially up on North Main, where we have a lot of buildings that are built right up to the property lines, and they don't have any parking lots, and if we were to interpret it that way, really there would be no changes of uses because they'd be ripping down half the building to build a parking lot, and I don't think that's something we want to promote. And so, we went ahead and revised that section to really just, you know, more clearly explain how we've been interpreting this section probably over the last 20, 30 years. And so, we had taken a look at that, and it's mainly just the change of use section, the new structure or use, we wanted to clarify that, you know, we've got a new structure or a new use is established on a previously undeveloped parcel, just to clarify that, you know, a new use going into an existing structure isn't a new use going in there, it's a change of use. And then the change of use section, just wanted to go through and rework that in order to allow that. So, you're just making up the difference if you have a higher parking requirement than the use that you went into, but giving them a little bit more leeway as well. So, I guess this statement says it best, you know, 110% credit is given to the most recent lawful use of the property for the number of parking spaces that would be required under this section, regardless of whether such spaces actually are provided. Any new spaces that are required shall be provided in accordance with the provisions of this section. When the number of parking spaces required for the new use exceeds by more than that 10%, the number of spaces required for the new use, the most recently occupied, the new use that most recently occupied the property, additional parking spaces are required only to make up the difference between the amount of parking required for the previous use and the amount of parking required for the new use, based upon the standards of this section. So, those are really the main changes, just giving, you know, instead of 100% credit, just giving a little bit of leeway to maybe allow for, you know, a slight change of use that may have a slight increase in the parking requirement, and so, those are the main changes to this section. Looking at the surfacing, right now, we have just specifications as to the thickness of concrete and asphalt, and how much of a rock base you need to maintain underneath of that. And then we have this kind of antiquated provision where it allows you up to five years through a development agreement if you lay down gravel in order to have the parking lot just gravel for up to five years, and we had talked about eliminating that. So, what we had proposed with this section, this is at the very beginning, we'd be inserting the allowance of, so everything gets done, maybe the asphalt plant shut down in the winter, we're giving them six months in order to pave it, and then the committee, when we met, they wanted an additional six months, so in some circumstance where it can't get paved within six months, they wanted the option for the zoning administrator to authorize an extension up to an additional six months in order to get that done. And so, you know, within a year, whatever the circumstance is, why they couldn't pave at that time, you know, that should have been cleared up by that timeframe. And then the portion that discusses the requirement for asphalt or concrete, we're sticking with what the current standard is, which is two-inch thickness for asphalt, and concrete's four-inch thickness with four inches of crushed rock base underneath. We are doing a little bit of clarifying in this section, mainly in the alternative surface allowance, so at the very end, we would just allow for alternative surfacing, as long as it's of similar durability and utility, and then we wanted to have that reviewed and approved by the city engineer, because the engineers are really the ones that, you know, have the expertise to determine whether or not it has similar durability and utility. So, that's pretty common, you know, among the other jurisdictions that we reviewed, as the way they do it is just leave it up to the city engineer. And then at the very end, we would be proposing to eliminate the five-year deferral for the, just the paving of the parking lot, and with the addition of the six months, and then the other six months in the very beginning. Not very much change to curbing. Right now, we require a bumper rail or a curb. Bumper rail is kind of antiquated terminology, you don't see, it's really all just curbing, and so, we'd be eliminating just the reference to a bumper rail and just stating that curbing needs to be at least four inches high, setback two feet from the property line. That brings us to off-site parking, and so, these are parking facilities that are located off-site from the subject property. Right now, we have three different scenarios, so the first one's for multifamily, we allow it within 100 feet, which isn't a very far distance. And then for number two, another kind of antiquated term here, we have hospitals, sanitariums, asylums, rooming and boarding houses, and similar uses, 300 feet. And then all other use, for other uses other than those specified, 500 feet. So, the proposed changes we had here, you know, once again, just going through and making all this terminology consistent, you know, getting rid of facility in those and just put parking. And the big one, I guess, is looking at, right now, we'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment in order for an off-site parking facility. You know, you go to the Board of Adjustment, and there's not a whole lot they would review as part of one of these proposals, and so, that would be, you know, requiring a conditional use permit, submittal fee, and requiring, you know, three, four weeks to get to a public hearing first, not a whole lot of information to review as far as an off-site parking facility. So, we'd propose to change that to zoning administrator approve that without going through the conditional use permit process, and then look, trying to consolidate some of, I guess, the uses and the distances. So, multifamily, we just thought we'd add all resident, you know, strike multifamily and put all residential uses other than single and two-family, so that'd cover your boarding houses, residential rental units, multifamily. And then we originally had 100 feet, the committee ended up wanting to recommend 250 feet, we really looked at what 100 feet was, and it's not very far, you know, you're, about the smallest lot in town is about 50 feet wide, and so, you're looking at, you know, maybe one lot away as being the 100 feet, so they wanted to up that to about 250 feet, and the commission was fine with that. We were just going to strike the reference to hospitals, sanitariums, asylums, and just leave what would be subsection two, so just say that for other, for uses other than those specified above, it would just be 500 feet. And then we have the joint use provision, so this allows for the joint use of parking lots, so maybe you have a office that's operational during the day, and then you have some type of bar that's just operational in the evening hours, and how you can share the parking lot and allow the joint use of this, and right now, we have a section that, you know, wasn't that bad. There's a lot of other jurisdictions that had common structure to their section. The one thing that you, the one commonality that you saw with the other jurisdictions was they never required a conditional use permit as part of this, and so, that's what, just like the off-site parking, we require a conditional use permit, so we'd be proposing to put this in the hands of the zoning administrator to approve. It goes through and has different percentages of parking facilities to be able to be satisfied by nighttime or daytime uses, it's at 50% right now. That was kind of low from what we experienced in the research, so the committee would recommend increasing that to 85%. You want it to count, you don't want to go all the way to 100% because you want to account for some type of overlap. So, you have an office during the day, you have some people that may stay 15 minutes late, you have some people that may show up to the gym 15 minutes early, and you want to account for that overlap in the parking lot. And so, we thought 85% was a, was a good number without going all the way to 100% on the joint use. And so, those are really the changes there, is just increasing the allowance of overlap there between nighttime and daytime uses, and then shifting that to the zoning administrator And then that brings us to the dimensions, bulk and dimensional requirements for parking lots. So, here we, you know, lay out depending upon if it's one-way, two-way, how wide the travel aisles are, how wide this, and how long the stalls are. The only change here, so our standard stalls, nine by 20 for 90-degree parking, compact, seven and a half by 15, and we allow 25% of the stalls within the parking lot to be compact. The only changes within this section would be to increase the compact allowance to 35%. So, this is one of the recommendations that the committee had, was to increase to 35%. Thought a good compromise to that would be to increase the width from seven and a half to eight feet. You know, we don't really run into any issues with the length of being 15 feet, but you do run into issues with the width in trying to get out in a compact space that's seven and a half feet wide. Sometimes it's hard to park your car and have enough clearance on the door for nine-foot standard stalls, and it's really tight for seven and a half. So, they were happy with that compromise to increase the width from seven and a half to eight with increasing the allowance of the compact spaces to 35%. Then we have a relatively new provision of the section, so a few years ago, in response to a development that wanted to utilize tandem spaces within multifamily development, so we allowed tandem for single family or two-family. So, you can park in your driveway, and then you have your garage, you know, that's perfectly acceptable. If you only, but if you have multifamily, we don't allow tandem, so we had that amendment a few years ago that allowed tandem in multifamily under certain circumstances, and it was mainly that it had to be in a garage, so you had to have the parking space in front of the garage, and then you had to have a space contained within that garage. But we only counted the garage space as a quarter of a parking space, as satisfying. So, the committee had some experience with this because one member had done a project, and I think Scott may have worked on designing the project, and it really ended up with just a ton of parking within the, they, you know, each had a garage per unit, but then they had a ton of parking within the parking lot. Our concern was mainly that there wasn't going to be enough guest parking, so if you count it 100% within the spaces in the garage, then all of a sudden, you don't end up with any spaces on the outside, and where are the guests to park? You know, you have visitors that come for Super Bowl Sunday, and you end up with limited visitor parking. So, what we had worked out on that was to count those spaces 100%, so the space within the garage will count, but no more than 50% of the required parking may be provided in a tandem configuration. So, that would ensure that you would have, you know, quite a bit of visitor parking in order to serve that development, and so, that was the compromise we came up with, with the committee on the tandem parking, and we think that that will probably work out pretty well. I think that satisfies our concern with the visitor parking being available, and then allows them to count 100% of those spaces within garages. And then we have this section, and this is just rearranging here, so we have specific zone exceptions, exemptions. We had the central business zone, so this was, I think, cited earlier in the chapter, and we struck it and consolidated all these exemptions. So, we moved it here, so it's just stating central business, off-street parking's not required within the central business zoning district, and then urban mixed commercial, this used to be in the urban mixed commercial zone, so it was in, I believe, Chapter Two, the commercial, or maybe Chapter Three, the commercial zoning district section. And so, we just wanted to consolidate all these parking exemptions into one location. So, we'd be shifting that and inserting this table, so this is the, you know, more of the urban mixed commercial that's in Legacy Crossing, and that's where this would reside within the parking section, which is a more fitting place for that. So, there's no changes here, it's just moving it from one section to the other, and then this is just the end of that section as well. One new insertion would be the university zoning district. We'd be saying that off-street parking's not required within the university zone since the University of Idaho manages parking on campus through the Parking and Transportation Services Office. So, that's one we've been running up against for some time. You have, usually if it's in the university zone, it needs to be, it needs to be owned by the university, and we may be revisiting that in the near future, but right now, if it's in the university And we may be revisiting that in the near future, but right now, if it's in the university zone, it needs to be owned by the university, and they've always taken the stance that they're exempt from our zoning requirements. And so, usually, parking is the only thing we run up against, and we were just, you know, stating this, that they don't, you know, usually Parking and Transportation Services manages all the parking in the core anyway, so we would just be stating that within the zoning code. And then, this is a new section as well, accessibility. We did have a statement that previously, earlier in the chapter, discussing ANSI, the American National Standards Institute, and how if you're required to have accessibility onsite, it needs to meet the current ANSI standards. And so, that's accessible routes, maybe from public sidewalks to building entrances, could be accessible routes from ADA parking spaces. It covers ADA parking spaces as well. So, we would just be stating that, so any, anytime you have a multifamily, commercial or institutional use, accessible parking is required and access as well. And so, we'd be stating that, and then referring to the, you know, where you go to find that information, which is the ANSI book, as well as the recently adopted building code. So, the building code kind of covers a lot of the internal accessibility requirements, but they also have the chart that tells you how many ADA parking spaces you require depending upon the size of the parking lot. So, we would just be stating that. And then, we have, did some illustrations. We're always, you know, have a tendency to get asked what the, the dimensions of ADA stalls, you know, what do I need to do for an ADA stall in my parking lot? And this would be really handy to be able to give to people in order to convey exactly what the requirements are, and to have it in our code. You have these two books, and they're disconnected from the zoning code, and so it just makes it easier to have them in one exact location. We did have a statement at the end, you know, anytime you take in requirements from other codes and putting them in your code, you want to make sure that if the other code changes and you don't get yours amended in time, that you need to, you know, figure out which one's going to take priority over the other. And so, that's why we put the last statement in, to say that the most recently adopted ANSI and building code requirements take precedence over those drawings in Figure Two, even though these drawings have probably remained the same ever since they were adopted and first adopted in 1991, so.
Just a quick question. So, if, if those diagrams actually changed in code, could you replace those diagrams with the new ones without, I mean, can you just do that administratively, or?
No, we'd have to go through a code amendment. Yeah, we weighed that, but seen as though these are probably unlikely to change, and, you know, wanted to ward that off the best way we could with just saying it'll, you know, take precedence over one or the other. We've done that a few other times in the code where state which one takes precedence over the other, so there's no confusion.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just wondering if you could easily unplug the diagram and plug in a new one if the code changes without having to do the?
Yeah, I wish we could, but no, unfortunately. And then, this is the chart from the building code. So, you know, depending upon how many spaces are in your parking lot, that dictates the number of ADA spaces. And then, the first one always has to be van accessible, so it has to be that eight-foot wide by eight-foot wide space. So, we'd just be dropping this chart in here. And then, we're taking this section here for schools. That's going to be moved as part of our use table amendment to chapters one through four. We're removing that and putting that in the design standards or specific use standard section of that chapter. So, we'll just be inserting that in another section. This is a portion of the parking requirements depending upon the use. We're not doing anything except these couple amendments right now, so this is going to be wrapped into, you know, we're doing the use table. So, we have, if you look through the current, so if you open your draft ordinance there and look through, and all the uses that are contained within there, you'll notice there's not very many. You know, it, there needs to be a lot more uses listed in there because it puts us in an odd position of trying to make a determination as to what the parking requirement should be because the use isn't there, or trying to find a comparable use to give a requirement. So, now that we've got the use table pretty much finalized, what we'll do is take all those uses and then come up with a parking calculation for those. And so, we were planning on just taking that at the same time we do the use table, so that'll, that'll come up shortly after this. But, right now, we had made a couple of changes. The first one to, to single-family, two-family dwellings. I think we talked about a year ago about an issue we were having with some larger homes being constructed close to campus that were being constructed with six to eight bedrooms and only being required to provide two parking spaces because they were single-family dwellings, and really running into an issue with a parking issue. So, you know, usually, you have a residential rental unit, which the code says that you need to account for some type of parking. You have multifamily, which these are similar to, you know, they kind of function like multifamily because there's usually, if it's six to eight bedrooms, then you usually have a person per bedroom. And granted, that each of these bedrooms has a bathroom onto it, too. So, it's more intended for, you know, boarding house, residential rental unit style housing. And, you know, it, this is more of a trend that's just come up lately, building these in these areas, and it's not unique to Moscow. Boise just enacted an emergency ordinance to account for the same thing because they had a lot of these popping up, and they were mainly duplexes next to BSU, and they were all six to eight bedrooms per side, and they only required four parking spaces. And so, what we had proposed to do was require the standard two, but if you have four or more bedrooms, it'd be one additional space for each bedroom in excess of four. So, once you get to five, six, seven, then we tack on an extra parking space in addition to that, and we do the same thing with two-family dwellings, add another space after you get over the four bedrooms. So, that would be the change there. And then, we have within, but we are eliminating, we had this provision before that if they're located, so like two-family dwellings, if they're located adjacent to a collector or arterial street, then the, the requirement increases. We'd be getting rid of that, as well as three or more bedrooms for multifamily. So, these are really locked in for one-bedroom, multifamily unit, two-bedroom unit, those are remaining the same. Three or more bedrooms, so we had this, it was .75 per bedroom, and then, but it was or one per bedroom for any multifamily dwelling containing three or more bedrooms providing direct vehicular access between the parking and a designated arterial collector. So, we'd be eliminating that provision and just maintaining the .75. One thing I think the commission had talked about, I didn't get it inserted in time, but the committee had, we discussed this at, at the committee level. They wanted to have some type of incentive for bicycle parking, and so, what we had come up with is we had proposed a required bicycle parking ordinance at one point in time that the council didn't adopt, and we had taken a portion of that to allow 10% reduction in automobile parking for providing a certain amount of bicycle parking. So, you know, you'd be able to, with this incentive, they'd be able to reduce their required amount of automobile if they're, if they provided a certain amount of bicycle parking. So, what we had said was the total number of bicycle parking spaces must equal four times the total number of reduced automobile parking spaces. So, if they, you know, maybe say they have 40 parking spaces, you know, they can get a 10%, 10% reduction, so they could reduce that by four automobile spaces. But, it has to be four times the total number of reduced. So, in this case, it'd be 16 bicycle parking spaces that they need to provide in order for reducing the automobile parking by four. And then, we require, you know, a certain rack type. We want the A or the inverted U or the modified U, so it's not a wheel bender style. And then, we have some requirements there, and then require it to be in a location that, you know, especially for multifamily, is well-lit, close to a building entrance, so people are actually going to use it, and they're not going to have their bikes stolen. And then, have some bicycle rack sheltering, 50% for multifamily, and then 25% for commercial or institutional uses. And then, we go through what the actual bicycle rack spacing and area is. So, everybody was fine with this at the committee, they really liked that, and given them that option of reducing it for providing bicycle parking, so. That brings us to the last section is landscaping. So, we'd gone through, and the commission had really wanted to beef up the purpose statement for the landscaping. Really, what we had listed previously within the code had to do a lot with aesthetics and preserving and the, the adjacent property values and the character of the neighborhood and, and, you know, things like that. We had gone through in the beginning and beefed that up a little bit by, you know, stating all the good things that landscaping does to parking lots in the community, reducing noise level glare, filtering stormwater runoff, reducing the urban heat island, filtering vehicular emissions, stabilizing soils, providing shade to users of the parking lots, promoting safety by directing traffic circulation with those islands, and then kept some of the provisions about, you know, appearance and protecting neighborhoods and adjacent properties. And then, the committee wanted to add at the very end, native plantings and zerescaping are encouraged for water savings, reduced maintenance, reduction in fertilizers and pesticides, increased pollination, as well as a reduction of yard waste. So, we ended up moving forward with that, that amendment. And then, right now, we have a section that, and this is one of the main sections that we really needed to rework. You have these large paragraphs, and it's kind of hard to interpret. At the beginning, we have all the landscaping defined. We go through and say you need one tree per 10 parking spaces. You need, anytime you have shrubs, they need to be at least two feet in height. That's been problematic because you don't buy shrubs based upon the height, it's usually based upon the gallon size. So, you know, usually, that's been a problem in the past when we've gone out and done inspections, when they're required to be two feet, but they're not. But, that's what they got at the nursery, you know, that's, that's all they could get. And so, you have those at the beginning as, you know, you define what it needs to be, you have trees that say they need to be seven feet in overall height. Well, the, the universal way to measure trees is usually the caliper. So, we have some, some measurements in there and ways to determine size of trees and shrubs that really aren't the current common standard that you encounter within the industry. So, we needed to update that. The placement of landscaping in off-street parking areas, so this is exterior parking, or exterior, excuse me, exterior landscaping. We have two sections that essentially say the same thing, but one is landscaping adjacent to properties and landscaping adjacent to public right-of-ways. Well, it's all exterior landscaping, and it's really the, the same thing when you go through those, those paragraphs. So, what we've done is, is, you know, reduce this section from this size to this size. So, and it says, you know, quite a bit more. So, we restructured that to say that, you know, required exterior landscaping has to be provided between parking lots and abutting public rights away, adjacent properties, has to be three feet in width, so we're just keeping with our current standard of three feet. Then, you need to have these contained within these. So, we're going away from the one tree per 10 parking spaces where you just put it wherever you want. We're going to a more of a consistent measurement to say that one tree of one and a half inch caliper every 40 lineal feet. So, within those exterior buffers, you have to have one every 40 lineal feet, and you have to have one shrub at least one gallon in size for perennial, at least two gallon in size for deciduous or evergreen every six feet. So, that's really what our current standard is right now. We have a shrub every six feet. Committee wanted to, of course, specify, you know, one gallon. So, this is, this is pretty common in the industry, and how you order plants when you do a development is by the gallon. And it changes, you know, depending upon perennial or deciduous or evergreen. So, we got the experts there to give us a recommendation on to what size to require. So, that was largely the committee making that recommendation. And then, we carry, we're carrying over, I guess, the intent to provide visual relief of a minimum of three feet in height upon maturity, and then that 50% need to be evergreen in order to ensure you still have that relief season-long. So, doesn't lose the, the leaves in the winter and remains green all year round.
There's a typo in the first line.
Is there?
Yeah. Uh, 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 at, at least two gallons in size.
Here?
Uh, no, next, uh, over on the two-gallon size. And a least, at least.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hate to be picky.
No, that's good. We'll have to, if you choose to approve it, recommend approval, we can just make that with the Scribners there. And then, at the very end, you know, this comes with a lot with our discussions with David Rock about site distances throughout parking lots and selecting the right species. So, we added a statement that considerations shall be given in the selection of trees and shrubs that at maturity do not present vehicular site obstructions at driveway, street intersections. And then, I think this is the last slide. So, right now, parking lot interior landscaping. So, right now, we have a 36-inch buffer, and we have this language where you need to divide it into bays. And the historical interpretation, and so right now, it's, you know, less than 50, no divisions required. If it's 50 to 99, you got two. So, this was really how we had utilized this in the past. So, this is obviously 50 to 99 spaces in this parking lot. I think the original intention was to have this 36-inch buffer dividing it into two bays. So, you've got one here and one here. Usually, you don't see that. You know, it's kind of like the Walmart scenario where you have the long, you know, bays that run north to south that divide it up, and really becomes problematic for, I guess, the trees being able to fit in a three-foot wide area like this. But, also, snow removal becomes problematic as well, and the majority of the islands that you see are these type of end cap islands here and here. You don't really see a lot of these islands that are long and at the forefront of the parking spaces. So, we looked at shifting to more of a configuration where you have the end caps and the islands that separate the, the spaces that way. We'd reworked this section. So, initially, we had proposed to, or the commission had proposed to begin the island requirement at 20 spaces. We had gone through the, the committee, and it was split about 50/50. So, half the committee wanted to keep it at 50. You know, you think about, we have a couple of different ways of, you know, they're really kind of apples to oranges because you have, you're dividing the parking lot with this type of bay, but then you're moving to this type of island. So, they're kind of really not talking about the same thing. But, one, you know, part of the committee wanted to stay at 50 before those kick in, and then the other half of the committee wanted to go with a recommendation of 20. So, we brought this back to the, the commission. Commission felt like it needed to compromise, and we moved that up to 30. So, right now, you don't need to provide any internal islands until you reach 30 parking spaces. Also, wanted to clarify that, you know, in certain circumstances, we have a lot of irregular-shaped properties in town which create irregular-shaped parking lots that may not be symmetrical. You know, you may not have a perfect rectangle, a perfect square, like I think that this envisions you do. You know, this is doable when you have a square lot like this to divide it up into bays, but when you end up with a lot here, and then all of a sudden, a lot that shoots off up here, like the Chuck Bond Court on the Blight scenario towards the South Cuplet that we had taken a look at, you know, it's, it's really not conducive to our current requirements. So, what we wanted to do was give a little bit of flexibility to So what we wanted to do was give a little bit of flexibility to allow the zoning administrator to determine if there's parking lots that are separate. So obviously if we have a parking lot, you know, here and then on another portion of the property, there's a parking lot over there that's disconnected, well, we wouldn't say that's one parking lot. We'd say that's two parking lots. And so this has given the zoning administrator some flexibility that if you have a parking lot and there's a drive aisle that leads to another parking lot, for the purpose of this calculation, we can make that interpretation that they're actually two separate parking lots and not required to provide the landscape islands. And then we go through the minimum requirements of the landscape islands. So you're required to have a minimum width of eight feet. And then we determine how that's measured inside of the perimeter curbing, as well as the length equivalent to the adjacent parking space. So almost always 20 feet if the adjacent stall is 20 feet. There has to be one island for every 12 parking spaces evenly distributed in the parking lot. And then we get into what's contained within the landscape islands. One tree of one and a half inch caliper, low shrubs of at least one gallon in size for perennial, at least two gallons in size for deciduous or evergreen, and then some vegetative ground cover. I have an error there too, it looks like. Okay, I'll have to fix that.
Oh, yeah.
And then landscape islands adjacent to a double row parking stalls as shown in Figure Three below shall contain two trees of one and one-half inch caliper. So that's just, we've got Figure Three below just to show that, you know, you have, this is really two rows, so you need, this would count as two islands here.
Now, are those trees right there, are trees required?
Yeah. So that, you know, one tree of one and a half inch caliper and then the shrubs. So that would dictate, you know, one tree and you have the shrubs here and then there'd be another tree, so.
Well, how wide are those, those islands are?
Eight feet.
Eight feet, okay.
Yeah. And then we go on to say that, you know, similar statement as before, considerations shall be given to trees and shrubs that at maturity do not interfere with parking lot. So we include lighting here because a lot of times you have the lighting within those landscape islands and they're usually competing with trees as well as vehicular site obstructions. You know, as cars maneuver through the parking lot, you don't want an evergreen, you know, a short Christmas tree looking pine that you can't see around and see oncoming traffic. So we included that statement there. But we also included some flexibility to say that the zoning administrator may authorize the relocation of a parking lot tree to another parking lot landscape area if such trees determine to interfere with parking lot lighting or vehicular site distances. So a lot of times we get out to the field and, you know, landscaping is always the last thing to go in on a development. You know, you have all the lighting that's out there, you have all the utility boxes. And so a common complaint from the landscapers is they get out there and the site's already set up and on their plans, it says a tree needs to go here. And, you know, what do we do? And we always give them flexibility, but we just wanted to make sure that was spelled out in order to, you know, allow us to work with them to be able to relocate it to another portion of the parking lot. So, so that's it. Staff recommends commission conduct a public hearing, consider public testimony, and recommend approval of the proposed amendment to council.
Well, are there any questions from commissioners?
I had a, I had a couple. On the, the change of use section where you get the 10% credit, I know that was done to simplify what was there before. So as I was reading through it, I wanted to make sure I understood how that was going to work. So let's say I've got a use that requires 10 parking spaces and I changed that to a use that now requires 15. I get credit for 11, so I have to add four.
Correct.
Okay. And that would be true even if I only have five now for whatever reason.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then the, would that also take into account, when it says last legal use, would that also take into account what's currently a non-conforming use?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that, you know, how we were interpreting it before was we were taking that use and applying the current parking table to that use. And so we wanted to, you know, specifically spell that out, spell that out, that we were using the parking table to, you know, establish what the parking count was for that use, even though they may not have it. So, you know, say it's a bar, requires 10 spaces, they don't have any, you know, obviously for the sake of these calculations, we would just go to the code. Well, it says 10 spaces and so that's the credit you would get plus 10%.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the way that would work.
Great. And then on the, on the bicycle section, it said they could get credit for, let's They could reduce the parking by 10%. Was that, as I recall, it was, that's not an all or nothing, so it'd be up to 10%.
Up to 10%.
Okay. Cool. Thanks, Mike.
Other questions? Okay, so I guess we should open the public hearing and, Scott, would you like to come up and speak?
Please. Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. I just want to speak real briefly. As part of the committee, we saw the work that Mike did and each time he'd bring back all of our recommendations, we'd talk through it some more. So Mike did a, did a lot of work on this and we hammered out a lot of issues that developers and designers like myself had. And I think we've come to a good compromise on this parking ordinance. So other than that, I just wanted to say I appreciate all the work and the thought that went into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so does anybody else? I guess I will close the hearing since no one else is present. Is there any other conversation within the commission now or are you ready to?
I think it looks great. You can tell a lot of work went into it. It looks good. Really good.
Yeah, it goes a long way in the right direction, so.
I like the clarifications that are in the proposal.
Seems a lot more user-friendly and I like the fact that the purpose of landscaping is more clearly defined rather than just limited to aesthetics. I mean, you know, that was it.
Yep, kudos.
So, thank you.
Just make a motion that we send it to council?
Okay, are you making a motion?
Yeah.
Dennis makes a motion?
Second.
Rob, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we, since this is an ordinance, we don't need to have any criteria, correct?
Correct, yeah. And the motion was with those Scribner errors?
Yes. Of course it was.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, yes.
Tease.
Yes. Okay. Thanks, Scott. Okay, so we move on and I do have the agenda in front of me now instead of the minutes. We move on to Item 7, 2009 comprehensive plan updates for Chapters 3 and 4. Mike?
So we had, we reviewed Chapter 3, I think, a time before and we had a chance to go through and go through all the sections. So I can give you a legislative copy next time. We barely just got those done. You know, looking at the sections that we were planning to update, local context, our alternate highway alignments, corridor beautification, public art, street trees, bicycle mobility. Looking at the local context section, we did have some of these updates last time, so it's really just updating a lot of the census numbers. So the most recent numbers that the Census Bureau gives us, our American Community Survey, and that's only between 2008 and 2012, is where they have a lot of the bicycle and pedestrian mobility tabulated. So between 2008, 2012, we went up a little bit from the 2000 census. So we went from 3% to 5% of the journey to work were made by bicycle. So that's good. And then we have some numbers about traffic congestion within Moscow. We'd just be updating the citizen surveys. So we previously had a 2006 citizen survey data. So we'd go, it looks like we went down a little bit from 76% to 72% with the 2014 citizen survey. And I think we just came out with the 2016. So I'll probably go back and just update those numbers to reflect what the 2016 citizen survey came out with. But 72% of cities' residents believe traffic is either not a problem or only a minor problem. And then 12% of respondents believe traffic was a major problem or extreme problem. And that was up from 9% back in 2006. Towards the end, we have a paragraph about the way you get to work. So, you know, looking at alternative means. So either by walking or maybe bicycling. In 2000, we were at 25%, so that's really a combination of walking and bicycling. The 2008 to 2012 American Community Survey, we only bumped up a 1%. So we went from 25% to 26%. Moscow residents either walked or used alternate means. So just updating those few things within that section. We've got the alternate highway alignment section, you know, looked at this. We may add a sentence or two, maybe to talk about the multimodal transportation plan and their recommendations. But, you know, reading through this, I think that it just refers you to the thoroughfare plan. And there are some alternate alignments. We still have the Western alignment that's being proposed. The Eastern alignments were, you know, transportation and Public Works were proposing to use existing roads and then, you know, other connections as those alternate alignments instead of the ring road concept on the east, on the eastern quadrants. And so I don't know that we necessarily need to update the text. This is our thoroughfare plan map that has all the functional classifications. So this is where we define local streets, collectors, arterials, national highways. We have, you know, what used to be the, or what is, I guess, currently is alternate highway bypass represented within these dash lines that orbit the city there, circle the city. So what we talked about last time was Public Works and Transportation Commission's current recommendation as far as the ring road concepts in the northeast quadrant and the southeast quadrant. And this is what they had been working on was after the multimodal study said the cost-benefit analysis of the ring road was really only, you know, came out to be a benefit in the Western quadrants. They started looking at alternative alignments where they could use existing roadways. And so that's what you can see here. We've got the existing ring road identified in this black line. We've got the new alignments using existing roads. So the solid line would represent existing road, even though it may not be up to, or most certainly isn't up to, maybe an arterial standard right now, it currently is there. So you have the solid line and then you end up with dash lines or the roads that currently are not there. So in this northeast quadrant, we'd have a kind of an existing network and then it would need to be connected by the dash lines here. And so that's what they had been working on and recommending that we adopt as part of the thoroughfare plan. In the southeast quadrant, we're looking at using Palouse River Drive as the alternative alignment. And so black lines, the ring road, be proposing to use Palouse River Drive all the way out to Mill Road and then head due north and then it would end up, you know, going up Mill and going into that northeast alignment. So that would be the ring road in the east portion of the city and, you know, just going to existing roadways. Looking at, this is the Transportation Commission and Public Works' recommendation for functional classifications. Really, the only thing that's changed are A Street. A Street went from being proposed to be a collector to a minor arterial. And then Third Street went from a collector to being proposed to be a minor arterial. And so those are really the two changes between the functional classification recommendations there. So what I've done is updated the thoroughfare plan within the comp plan, Chapter 3 here, and updated it to reflect those recommendations. So southeast quadrant, you know, we've got, remove the alternative highway alignment here, just have Palouse River Drive. These roads currently aren't here, so you'd end up going up to Mill, heading north, following that same alignment, heading up North Mountain View. And then eventually, you know, this road doesn't exist, it's dashed, but eventually connecting to 95 from North Mountain View, leaving the alignment really the same in the Western quadrant. So this is, this is the primary bypass that was needed is to get the heavy truck traffic coming up 95 and then turning westbound on Washington and Third Street to head west out Pullman Road. And so we'd be, you know, this is the most needed in order to get that truck traffic off of downtown. And then leaving the alignment here to the northwest as well. I made the changes that they recommended to A Street as a minor arterial and then to Third Street as a minor arterial as well. So that was pretty much just making the changes that Public Works and Transportation had recommend that we do. We have a section about corridor gateway beautification and it points to corridor beautification. I'll have to end up, I thought I did this, but I guess I didn't. We'll have to, I was just going to include a statement about the beautification plan along the highway. Yeah, Joel?
Back on that map, I see that Warbonnet is shown going north with a dotted line. As I remember it, there's a conservation easement on a section of land which that road would have to go through. Is it fair to indicate that alignment as likely to go through any time in the future?
Well, I think we still leave it on there. I mean, you know, you never know what could happen with a conservation easement. You know, they say that it's perpetual, but they always have some type of mechanism in order to maybe allow certain things, you know? So it'd probably be up to the Palouse Land Trust Board to vote on, you know, may not be development, but maybe an allowance of a road through there at one point in time. So, you know, I think we probably just leave it on there and if it never gets developed, you know, the conservation easement stays on there in perpetuity, we still just have a line on the map and it doesn't really hurt anything. And, you know, if development starts to spread, you know, up in that quadrant, maybe the U of I, what, the dairy farm there to the north, you know, maybe that starts to get developed. Maybe we think about revising that to shift it maybe to the northeast to get around the conservation easement. But, you know, maybe that's something the Transportation Commission should look into, maybe an alternative to get around it.
I have a question about the, while we're on this map, the dotted lines that connect the alternative bypass in a sense, instead of the ring road, especially on the eastern quadrant. Is there anything on paper that's, or anywhere that's trying to establish those as right-of-ways for the future or is it, are we just looking at fiction here?
You're talking about the dash lines?
You're looking at planning.
Well, planning and fiction are two different things. I mean, I would hope that there would be, well, I hope.
Well, it, you know, as with all of these developments, you know, this is, classic example is, you know, as development happens, then the roadways need to be accommodated as part of that development, so.
I'm thinking of the blue lines to the east where, you know, they're kind of in the county, you know?
Well, I mean, it's probably not going to happen for another 30 years, 50 years, you know, maybe, but.
Well, I guess where I'm going is, okay. Well, I guess where I'm going is, okay, say that gets annexed to the city where something happens, and we have to approve a subdivision that would preclude that from ever happening. That, how do we avoid that type of circumstance, the way it is set up now?
Approve a subdivision that would not have one of those alignments go through?
Right. That somebody might decide to plunk a couple of houses right in those north-south or those hash lines that are, right now, don't, are just lines on paper and don't connect anything but would be the preferred route.
Well, that's always, you know, when we annex property on the edge of the town, that's why we always want it to be at least, you know, some moderate density residential, because the, the larger lots you have, the harder that's going to be. So, you look up at North Polk, you have kind of this mishmash of, you know, really no subdivision. There's just lots all over the place.
Right.
Well, we've pretty much given up on any type of connection there because there's not going to be a large piece of land that's going to come in, that's going to do a subdivision because they've already been kind of divided up. And so, you know, that, that's really our intention is, you know, we, we get pressure all the time to, you know, maybe have a one acre, two acre, three acre sized lot subdivision right on the edge of town that's going to remain in the county and be on Wells. Well, you know, that's going to really prohibit us because the people are going to build houses and they're not going to want, you know, they're not going to subdivide it. And next thing you know, that's going to prohibit us from putting a road through there. And so, that's why we want this kind of efficient, orderly subdivision development.
I, I agree with you. I'm just wondering how we...
Yeah. Well, it, and a lot of it is having a good relationship with the county planning and building department and, and working with them and, you know, and, and going through and, and getting our area-city impact agreement revised and, and adopted by the county and the city because then they'll have these lines on their map as well, and then they'll be bound by these lines in their land use decisions also. So...
Thank you. That, yeah, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah, that, that's why it's, you know, I guess important that, that we look at that long range because they're, you know, really the, the county, you know, enforces these things too, and they, they need to take into consideration what our long-range plans are as well. So, we'll, we'll end up adding corridor gateway beautification. We have that, the, the goal of beautifying the highway corridors and the main city entrances. And I thought I added a sentence there, but I'll have to go back and do that. We had some intersection safety statistics that needed to be updated. We have these actually pretty recently within our multimodal transportation plan. So, they have a lot more detail. So, we thought we'd do is just take that data and just put it into the comp plan. So, this is the map that, that corresponds to the table here. So, we've got all the accident-prone intersections, and then by the size of the star represents the more accidents at that intersection. Looking at the multimodal statistics, they're a little bit different. They take about a five-year average, and so, they went from 2007 to 2011 and tabulated all the accidents over those years and then came up with the top ten collisions. Think Third and Jackson is still number one, but a little bit different of a shakeout there when you go down to some of the other. A lot of them are on Pullman, Pullman Road, Troy Highway area. And then we've got this, a lot nicer of a map in the multimodal transportation plan. This covers pedestrians and bicyclists. So, what we thought we would do is just put this map within the comp plan. So, we have all these, you know, a lot more detail in, in intersection safety than what we currently have within our, our comp plan with just the, the stars. You know, you have really a lot of the intersections in town where they've tabulated the data and put that into map form. So, that's what we're planning on doing with, with that. Public art, we've gone through and done the public arts master plan, so 2015. So, we'd be adding this statement, 2015, city adopted a public art master plan that identified a ten-year vision for public art in Moscow and outlined a plan for desired types of art and locations for public art placement. And then the plan did identify ten priority locations for installation within the next ten years and then go through those locations. So, we had, the, the primary location was the north city entry, couplet at Main and C Street. We had the downtown streetscape, so, you know, all downtown benches, trash receptacles, planters, sculpture plints with artwork on top of those. Jackson and Sixth, the southwest corner, so at the entrance to Hello Walk to Legacy Crossing that we just looked at last week with the Hello Walk Plaza there. South City Entry, US 95 crossing the south fork of the Palouse, public, Moscow Public Library, so the Carnegie Library, Berman Creekside, East City, Nineteen Twelve Center, Paradise Path, and Friendship Square. And the street tree section, you know, this talks a little bit about the importance of street trees as part of new subdivisions and developments and located within the tree lawns. January of this year, the council adopted the revised street tree planning program, and so, just be updating this section to reflect that. So, we've revised the, the program to require street trees to be planted as part of, of the building permit process. Street trees are now required to be planted as part of any new development, and the developers given the option of planting the trees or furnishing a security to install trees at a later date. And then the community forestry administrator works in concert with the community development department to administer the tree planning program. And then I think this brings us to the last portion, the needs updating, the, some just more census numbers. And this is pretty similar to what we updated at the very beginning, just pedestrian bicycle data. I guess this is just bicycle mobility. So, it'd just be gathering that 2008, 2012 American Community Survey data, of course, going from three to five percent. And the journey to work would rank at top one percent of communities in the U.S. I think in our, our population size, we're number eleven. So, I think that's communities that are twenty thousand to ninety-nine thousand, we're number eleven in bicycle commuters. So, that, you know, pretty, pretty good. And then we have some numbers from the citizen surveys, so I've updated those. We previously listed 2002, 2004, 2006. So, we'd be updating those to 2012, fourteen, and sixteen. Talking about commute, you know, what the respondents said, how they commute and by bicycle, and it went from nine percent, seven percent, and seven percent. So, it's held steady the last two citizen surveys as far as the percentage that commute to bike or commute to work or, I guess, school by, by bicycle. That's it. So, that, that's wrapping up chapter three.
Mike, real quick, could you go back to the accident table?
Sure. This one?
Yes.
Or this current one?
The other one. I was just curious, in my transportation planning course that I just took last year, we had a discussion that the transportation engineering realm has began to refer exit to a accident as a crash instead of an accident, just as your source says, it says the crash database.
Yeah.
I was wondering if we should update the table to, say, crash history instead of accident history, just so that we are synonymous with the trends that are happening with the transportation engineering realm? So, instead of saying accident history, that's crash history, that it's crash history?
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it...
I don't know. And that's, and then another thing, just to make this, I don't know, better for our citizen readers, if we had a definition that the Idaho Transportation Department is using of what constitutes a crash, because a crash can be many different things. Is it only two automobiles that are involved? Is it an automobile and a pedestrian? Or can any automobile all alone be involved in a crash? I think having some kind of idea of what kind of accidents are actually happening would be pretty valuable, especially if, because I would imagine that the accidents that are happening with us, you know, probably are not that grievous in nature, which would be reassuring to citizens.
Yeah, I think, you know, through this, they have different types. So, they've got like, looks like minor, moderate, or severe. So, I can look at, I'll have to go back to the multimodal to see if they define. I, I'm probably pretty sure they define what, what those types are. So, yeah, that would probably be good if, if we're going to use, you know, this data to explain what those are. And so, I, I could certainly include definitions of what those are in there.
Thank you.
So, Mike, I'm still, I'm, of course, unhappy with the designation of Third as an arterial. I just don't see how the talk about community and about historic elements and residential clarity allows us to begin to call Third an arterial. So, I want to continue that debate and think about, I, I, I don't agree with it. I don't know how transportation decided that that's an okay thing to do, but I don't believe it is. I think we can survive as a, as a collector. It is a collector. There's no getting around that. And whether, whether we, it gets as much use, it gets all the use it can get, but to try to begin to erode the central historic district of Moscow by calling it a arterial, I think it is the wrong thing to do. I think that just justifies. So, at some point in our document, we say, we have all these goody-two-shoe things, and then we say, oh, well, the cars get, obviously, cars are going to run over us whether we like it or not. And so, I, I will certainly bring as many people as I can to the discussion, but I just am not, I just don't think that's the right thing to do. I feel that a Third should continue to be the collector that it is.
Yeah, I think that, you know, in the current comp plan, they talk about usually, you know, how many trips are on the roadway, and it's, I think collector is usually one thousand to five thousand daily trips. And then once you get above five thousand, it's usually a minor arterial. I think that's probably mainly the reason why they had upgraded it from collector to minor arterial is you're probably, you know, pushing above that five thousand, maybe not east of Hayes, but from, from Washington to Hayes, you probably, you know, depending upon where you take the, the measurement, I, I think that that's always been Les's position is that it's, it differs on where you're at on Third Street, and that's what has been his, has been, has been his explanation as to why the traffic counts have been, you know, different depending upon, you know, what, what year and where they're at.
We've been pretty, as, as I've already pointed out, there is no particular clarity in the reporting of those, of those traffic figures. And we all know that Third is used a lot. We use it. It's a collector. To just call it a arterial starts to nibble away at what is one of our most, I don't want to call it exactly sacred, but certainly one of our, we don't have many historic districts in, in town, and this is one of them. And the district will essentially go all the way down Third, not to mention all the other, the activities that go on. It, it's the city's most precious park in terms of, so to call that an arterial just, you know, I, I don't think we, we can't, we can't ignore the fact that people use it. We know, you know, we know there's more five, more than five thousand cars a day. So, it certainly, it happens. But to, let's, well, let's widen it a little bit and make it a better arterial. Well, I don't want to do that. And I'll, I'll, I'll do whatever struggle I can, I can muster to remind ourselves that this is a rather special street. And I, I believe that we should, I'd like to see us continue to just call it a, what a collector. And so, anyway, I'm certainly go on record of that, and I will continue to, to bring as many people to the table as I can to rediscuss the issue. I, I, I don't know how we slipped into it with the multimodal plan. I, I didn't seem to be at the table at the time. But now that this is at our table, I would be remiss in not expressing how I feel about, about Third Street and the fact that with the, the way it's used by the, the city, it becomes...
Well, in a way, you're hitting it right there is how a street is used in a way makes more of a defining character than, than what we call it. I mean, I'm thinking about D Street where they just, you know, it, it's designated as a collector, and yet the pedestrian accommodation projects in front of the junior high have, have really taken the opposite tone towards what an arterial would be, and they really reflect more the character of nothing more than a collector's street at the most. And so, that, I'm hoping, at least if we see blue lines on paper, that that's an example of still paying homage to, to the, the use of that street and the pedestrian traffic and the bicycle traffic and everything, all the activity between the nineteen-twelve building and the high school that, of people going back and forth across that street. It's not an arterial in the way it performs. It's, I, I mean, I, it, people, you stop there constantly, you know, during high school class change or whatever hours. I mean, it's not just very much like the, the junior high. So, I guess I'm wondering if it even really matters if the, if the uses are really going to define truly what it is, and we do make a concerted effort to accommodate the pedestrian and bicyclists, alternative multimodal traffic. And we're not seeing that on here. What we're just seeing is lines on paper, just like I was saying. Well, are we going to give up every chance we have to get traffic around town and avoid this problem to begin with if we can't secure the land to do it? Because within the city, we've let people develop right where that should have happened fifteen, twenty years ago when all the developments started moving east. I mean, so, it's, I, you know, it's, it's planning, as Walter said, it's, it's the dilemma of planning is, is trying to stay ahead of, of the development. But, you know, so to what degree does designating this an arterial when in fact it's such a heavily multimodal street really make any sense or matter? I don't, I don't know. I mean...
Well, then all of our street standards are meant to reflect multimodal transportation. You know, I mean, that's what Transportation Commission's been working on is their complete streets policy and, and, you know, with those new standards, we have widened sidewalks, bike lanes, you know, they're really meant to accommodate all types of transportation.
So, what do you really see as the difference with the, if that was a, I guess, a green... So what do you really see as the difference with the, if that was a, I guess, a green line? No, well, I'm not sure what the next, what, what a collector's street color is.
Collector's green.
Green, okay. So what do you see as the real difference in its designation, if it were Collector versus arterial? What's the fundamental, other than the word?
Well, I guess...
Looking just specifically at Third Street.
Well, I guess my disclaimer is I'm a land use planner, not a transportation planner.
Right, no, I understand.
But, you know...
Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just trying...
You know, I think that, I think what Les has always pointed out is that regardless of what the, the classification is, there's always what the context of the street is. And so you have areas that you have collectors, and the speed limit's 35, but then you have other areas that aren't, isn't safe to be 35, you know? It's like, you're looking at, we had the extension out there on, on Slonaker and Landy Lane. We had, you know, when that went through, you know, it has a curve to it, and, you know, it's supposed to be a collector. We had, when the subdivision went through, you know, obviously, that street's not going to function as a collector for 30 years. And so, you know, we had some deviations at the council level to allow certain things beyond what the city standard is. And it's probably not, you know, it's more of a residential, local residential street, and the speed limit doesn't warrant 35 miles an hour, because right now, it's functioning as a, or it will be functioning as a local street. It's not going to be a collector that carries traffic from Mountain View all the way over to Orchard. But at one ti, you know, some point, it may. And that's always been, I guess, his point, is that, you know, you have roads all through the city that, you know, they're designated as the, the same thing, but they're very different, and they have different configurations with sidewalks and bike lanes, and they have different speed limits. And so I, I don't know that it's going to matter one way or the other, if it's Collector or arterial, but I, I'm not elected to make, you know, decisions as to what's going to happen.
I guess I would disagree. I'm worried that if we call it a arterial, oh, well, then let's do what arterials do. Let's, let's make it wider, or bigger, or whatever. We can induce traffic on the Third if we, if we want to. We, we can do that. I believe we can. I don't think we should. And so how can we, living with the brilliant pros of the community discussion in our comprehensive plan, it would, and it seems to me that D, and Sixth, and Third have been, over the last 30, 40 years, been used pretty much in the same way. They're all, there's not much differentiating between those three streets as we, as we cross town. But to give a special designation to a street to say it's that next level up, you know, and of course, we can get more traffic on Third if we build a bridge across the crick. We, I think we, we can figure that out. It doesn't take a Chinese philosopher to figure that one out. And, and so I'm trying to be as sensitive as I can to this central core of our downtown that we have called a historic district, and we've got, there's more historic buildings on Third than any other street, other than Main Street. You know, Main has a historic district on it, and we've decided to make that Main Street a, basically a parking lot. And so we've done, I think, the right thing there. We've, we've really honored the downtown, and it's served us really well. And I think we should attempt to do the same thing on, on Third. And so I, whatever I need to do to try, if you, if you don't think there's anybody else in town that cares about it, I can produce quite a few people who do care about it. And I would like at least to consider, you know, leaving Third as a, as a collector, as it, as it surely is. And, I mean, every time I bend over to dig a weed out of my median strip and get bumped by a car blasting by, I know that it's a, it's a collector. I, I get that. I would hope that we wouldn't encourage people to go 40 miles an hour on it, as opposed to 30. I would hope that would be the case. Do you see what I'm saying about trying to at least honor the, the historic core of our downtown? And I can make an argument, I think I can make an argument, that Third is a little different than Sixth or, or D. On the other hand, as Wendy mentioned, we're really with the middle school. We've really done some really, I think, important things over there on that street to protect our kids as they, as they go, come and go. And we haven't done that yet at the high school, but I believe we should.
Well, if I, if I were to really think out there and could be the God Planner, I would say that none of those streets should be taking development that's to the east through the core, historic core of town, just as a conduit, that if you look at the Troy Highway coming around, it's the urban renewal district that really should have offered up that opportunity to get around downtown to the Troy, I mean, to the Pullman Highway to get, because the biggest traffic load is either going to the University of Idaho, WSU, or Pullman. People are trying to, or shopping on the west side of town. And so all that growth on the east is trying to get west, and it's having to go through all the stor, historic neighborhoods to get there. But, you know, it, I think it's probably too late, you know? But that would have been a golden opportunity, right down that railroad line, you know? And so, I mean, I look at it here, and I go, why doesn't that connect? Because that's the one little missing link, you know? Unfortunately, there's a few buildings in the way, but it's, it would make more sense than building a bridge, to me. But...
Wendy, I brought that up to the city planner 35 years ago.
I wish they had listened to you. I wasn't here 35 years ago. I was here 30 years ago.
I'm against the council allowing the mini, many storages to be built in the middle of that right away.
Is the, is the designation of arterial versus collector, is that simply a matter of number of trips, number of automobile trips?
It's largely that, yeah, that's what it is. Sure.
Because I see the...
I mean, I think, I think you're right. There's a, Moscow's not so big that we need to worry about getting people from one side to the other in a hurry. It's, it can be a hassle, depending on which way you go. But by and large, it's not going to change your, change the time you make a, make a trip, or the time it takes to make a trip. The Third Street is, I mean, it's a logical place to go for a lot of types of transportation. Just, you know, you go up Sixth, you got a big hill. You go up D, you got a big hill. There, D especially is narrower, and Sixth is...
Certainly for bicycles, it's the only route.
Yeah.
And walking, too.
If you're going to ride your bicycle, you're going to go up Third, because even going over to First, you're starting to get, get some hills there before you get up on, on top.
Right.
You've got the school there, you've got the community center, you've got the road that narrows, and you've got the park, which is, a lot of weekends got something going on, if not just people in it. So it, no matter how many car trips, the, is it going to be descriptive or prescriptive? You know, are we going to say, well, we're going to call it an arterial because of the number of car trips, and then start designing it and developing it that way? Or are we going to say, well, it's a main route of transportation, and given the number of car strip, car trips, you could call it an arterial, but really, that's not how we want to design it?
Right. I mean, sort of like what's happened at the foot of D Street. I mean, on the, on the east side, end of D Street, so...
And it's really not even up to collector's standard, right?
Right.
I mean, we have, there's no bike lanes on it.
No.
And there's parking over there by the high school, all the way up to, what, Howard, maybe?
So an example would be if you happen to drive to the west side of campus. And if you really want to get from the west to the east, you really avoid that whole corridor of Sixth Street, where the students are constantly crossing the street. If you're, you know, you go, you take all those arterials and modify your behavior to get around. So, you know, if, if we have those in place, people will use them, I think, if they're in a hurry to get around things. I mean, you know, that's, but we just need that, that alternative there.
Well, there's no doubt that the, the core of our city has some detriments to traveling fast. I mean...
Which is good, in a way.
Which is good. Right. I, there once was a day, when I came to campus to be a planner for the campus, I had imagined that we would have a ring road around the campus, and so we could go fa, at that moment in, in my life, I thought going fast was a good deal. Now, as I look at Sweet, and I see that jag as you come up Sweet and get to Taylor, and have to slow down, I now, I think that's a real wonderful corner, because that means that you're not going 40. And so the thought of racing around campus at 40 miles an hour is not so good. And of course, they put 25 on perimeter drive even, even though it's shown as a, something, something green. As you go down that hill, it's, so the campus in a sense is one of those special areas, as I think as the core of the town between D and, and Sixth is a special area as well. And I, I'm just a little bit concerned about calling it a, a arterial, so that, well, maybe we can get, I don't know if it allows you to get more money or not for this or that. But I don't want to encourage more traffic on any of those streets than we already have. And it's, seems to me that in talking about it, we need to put the figures, the historic and current traffic figures on there, or else we're just talking about colored lines here without, without the figures. I've asked Les for some of those figures, because I've seen them shift a little bit from year to year. But I'm, I'm not sure where it is right now, at this, at this moment.
Well, and this map came from Public Works and Transportation Commission, or no?
Anyway, I don't want to...
At any rate, I mean, to a degree, we don't have that much control over it. It's what we're kind of working with.
Sure, I get, I get what we have. I just don't want to call it a arterial, and I will, I don't want to just go on with it. But I'll do whatever I can do to assist anyone here at the table, or in future meetings, if I need to bring 30 or 40 people to talk about it, I'll be happy to do that. I think it's something to be, to talk about. I think it's a fairly important issue.
What would the mechanism be if, in revising the comprehensive plan, we decided we didn't want to call a street a certain thing? Would that matter?
Well, you would just recommend a city council. So the process goes the same, as much like our, the rest of, you know, everything that you do, is make a recommendation to city council. So, yeah, I simply just took Public Works and Transportation's recommendation and implemented it here, but...
So we have the power to do that on this map?
Certainly.
I mean, we have the power, okay. That, that wasn't sure about, so...
Doesn't mean that city council would go along with it, but you can certainly recommend that Third Street remain a collector, sure.
Mike, to your knowledge, whose definitions are we using for what is a arterial, what is a collector, number of trips? Is that Idaho Department of Transportation definitions that are being used for that?
They're probably I T E Trip Manual.
All right. So the only, because I understand what Les is saying 100%. We don't want to call it something, and obviously lead us down a path where we don't want to go. However, you know, for the purposes...
What Nelson's saying, what Les is saying. Do you mean that? No, oh, yeah, yeah, okay. No, I was, because, because before you were in the commission last game, to talk to us about that, yeah, sorry, no, that's okay.
So if the current definition's being used, that every community in the state of Idaho is using, that engineers and planners alike are using, is based upon the Idaho transportation standards, I think we should embrace them and use them, to an extent. I'm, I'm hesitant about making up our own definitions, just because as planners, we need to work with a variety of different people in different fields. So being able to speak their language and using their vernacular is very important. I think there are perhaps other ways we could remedy this issue without going into, well, let's look at the data specifically, because I understand that, that certain processes are flawed in the way that they gauge trips. A lot of time, they don't account for, you know, a certain number of trips is only happening during a certain time of the day, and, you know, so forth. But perhaps in the comprehensive plan, under historic districts, we could maybe list some sort of, maybe some sort of provision that seeks to protect the streets that are within those historic districts, when it comes to any evaluations that would deliberate about adding lanes and whatnot, just so we can preserve those, those spots. However, if the street is a arterial, because it does have the number of trips as defined, I think we have to acknowledge it. And we, like, because it, I don't know, red is red, blue is blue.
Well, I think it's also their anticipating... Let me just make a little statement. The, the three streets, D, Third, and Sixth, or Third has the least traffic of any of them. So if, in other words, putting arterial on that, if it has less traffic than Sixth and/or D, so I think it is important to see the numbers. I'm not making up any thing. I think somebody else has made it up. I might accuse Les of making, of making what I'm...
Why don't you all invite Les in here?
Well, we, we did.
He's been here.
He came and did a...
Has he talked about this specific issue?
Yes, we did. We, we had quite a long session with Les.
And you're still confused about why he did what he did?
Pardon me?
And you're still confused about why he did what he did?
I'm not confused. I mean, it's, I mean, me personally...
It's two different roads, is the problem. And you got a busy one that just gradually goes down into less traffic, and so that's the, I think that's the main issue.
Well, he explained a number of things. If we don't, you know, I, I guess I'm not really excited about the Third Street Bridge, and I would like to see thinking of traffic going around the city, like we just talked about. But what he said is if it, if, okay, if Third doesn't go through, then you bring it down B Street, or you bring it down First Street, or you bring it right in the middle of Fort Russell. I mean, you know, so there's no pretty solution.
A First Street Bridge can be put in there if that's a residential street.
Yeah, right. There's...
It doesn't have to be an arterial or collector.
Right. There's no, there's no pretty solution, is really what I derived from...
Nelson's got a good point.
Yeah.
You know, when you sit here and think about D, Third, and Sixth, and think about volumes, what you see, then why are, why are they labeled like they are? And I don't know the answer to it. Mike says he doesn't know.
So, I would say because Third Street is busy.
Well, we could ask him for a clarification without having to give another presentation, because he did give a lengthy presentation. I mean, we, we dedicate most, the best part of a meeting, I mean, the most of a meeting to it.
But he didn't, limit it to this question. But he didn't talk about, we didn't focus on those three streets. He, he talked in generalities, and when I brought up the figures about traffic, he kind of slid under it a little bit. And so I, I'd love to see more figures. I just think that D, and Third, and Sixth are all part of a community activity that, and why we choose to make one of those streets an arterial and one not an arterial needs to be explained.
Well, the other two are already shown.
I agree.
Yeah.
And that's, that, I'm just bringing that one up, and I don't want to go on here for an hour, so I've made my point. I'm happy to...
Wendy, could I just make, because I don't want to belabor it either, but if we, if we keep focusing, or, or the traffic planners, or any of us that are talking about this, keep focusing on the numbers, we're going to miss the really important piece of this, and that's the context of what that corridor is.
Exactly.
And I haven't heard anybody say, I mean, you're kind of, we're talking around it, but it isn't about numbers, it's about...
It's about the context of that part of the community. And, and somehow, we've got to be able to incorporate that. But that's probably not something we're going to be able to do tonight. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that as well. So that, you know, in terms of land use, that's what, what we're really about, so.
Well, I'm just, in other words, Mike said, okay, there are two things I want to change on this map here. Thanks to our highway folks, and he had two circles. One was on, had to do with A Street and the way it goes out to the mall ride, and one was on Third. And I'm, I'm, I'm calling that as a, I'd like to pursue, I'd get A Street. I use A Street a ton myself. I use Third a ton, you know, I haven't gotten rid of my car just recently. So I understand that we use these. I just don't understand why all of a sudden we're going to call that a arterial. And I want to have that explained a little bit more carefully, and I-
Well, we could ask him to answer that question, and maybe he could answer that question without coming, or just-
You're talking all around it, and he's the only one that apparently hasn't answered it.
Right, right, okay. Okay, fair enough, so.
So I can ask him that question and bring back the answer, or I could try to have him come and-
Why don't we start with that? Well, or you, you think not, Walter, what do you think?
I would ask Les to come in.
Okay, okay, we can ask him to come back and just delimit. It's a, somewhat of a showstopper on us moving forward with our own input on the-
Let him talk about collectors, arterials, and the specific-
And why streets are designated, and, and what other considerations should there be? I mean, you know-
I believe, I remember, there is some funding consideration for an arterial. That's how we, how we're able to get I T D or L T A funds for A and for Mountain View is because they're arterial. So I think there is, somebody mentioned that.
Right.
That may or may not be appreciated.
I kind of think that's true, too.
Okay, well, that sounds like a good plan, then, you know, just ask him.
We, we just went up against a wall on this, and we need more information.
Right, so we need, right, we need a-
Thank you for listening for a minute. It's a, I think, I do know something about Third. I have lived on it for thirty-five years, which is something that hardly anyone else has done. I have that, a little bit of history. I'm still alive. I often say, you know, I raised my son there. He, he, he's, yeah, he does drugs, but he, he still is a pretty good guy. So I don't know whether living on Third Street makes a drug addict out of you or not, but that being said.
Okay, Nelson, let's move on.
We do have some interesting discussions here.
We need to move on.
Let's have more traffic, you know, maybe we can get some more changes in our lives.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, well, anyway. So, did you have chapter four also, or?
I have a printout. We'll cover it next time. It's the Parks and Rec and Open Space chapter. This one should be fairly easy. It's not very long. We've already updated all the maps as part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan that was adopted a couple of years ago. So we've already redone the maps. I'll just need to go through and update some of the numbers on the parks. I don't think a whole lot's changed. Maybe we've added one or two. But, yeah, I'll pass this out, and everybody can take a look at it in your spare time, and we'll, we'll come back next time.
That was just chapter three, Mike?
That was just chapter three.
Right.
So in terms of use table ordinance, or you, did you have something you wanted to show us on that?
I did. We're really close. I met with Legal on Monday, and they're really close to having the whole ordinance ready. But I did have, the only thing I have is the use table that I printed out for you to take home as well. And this is what I presented last time. I just thought I'd give you a hard copy so you can look through that as well, to see if there's anything that catches your attention or doesn't make sense, and-
So we'll take a final look at the, or, not, it's not a final look, but we'll revisit them at the next meeting?
Yeah, we could take a look at it next meeting. You know, they're really close to having the ordinance done, so I'm hoping they have that at the next meeting, and we can move forward with that.
And then do we, we have to do a public hearing? No, not really.
We'll have to notice it, but that'll probably be about a month, month and a half out. We're going to have to update some of the definitions in there as well, so we'll probably take a couple of meetings to go through that and review those.
Are you saying that we, we will have a public hearing on the changes? Or are we talking about-
Well, we're talking about the use table.
Use table?
As an ordinance.
Yeah, the use table will, you know, probably in next, next month, month and a half, we'll have that ready for public hearing. But we'll have to take a look at that probably at least a couple of meetings prior to that, so.
And we're still a ways out on the comprehensive plan. I mean, we're going to be going-
Yeah, we're, we're moving to chapter four. There's seven chapters, so.
So not anytime soon on public hearing. But chapter three, yeah, if we could have Les come perhaps to the next meeting, if it's not a crowded agenda, just ask him to address those questions for chapter three.
Yeah, I can talk to him about that.
So that leads us to shared readings. Did anybody have a chance to read them? And if so, yes, okay. Well, I, because I think some of these interface well with the discussion we've had today. I mean, you know, in terms of looking at particularly parking issues and sharing streets issues, et cetera. So, and, and then in terms of with the urban design guidelines for the, the legacy crossing, the, the walking article really addresses some aspects of that walkability issue and what, why we had put in so much transparency along the street, et cetera, and imagibility being important as well. But I don't know, I, I guess, does anybody have a place they want to start? Or are you all burned out, or what, where are we?
I, the third article where they were talking about, and Sandpoint caught my attention, as did Seattle, where they're just not going to require any, any parking. If you want to build a development and you were expecting to sell your development to somebody, if you don't think they need parking, you don't provide it. If you think that you can't sell it because you don't have parking, then you figure out a way to solve that problem. But it just occurred to me that we've got this wonderful experiment down at ninety-five and eight that's going to give us a lot of information on how that works.
That's our living example right now.
It's great, I, I think it's wonderful. And I, I was struck, I haven't been to Sandpoint for a couple of years, but I was struck by their comment on what they were doing. Of course, we kind of are doing that downtown. Yeah, well, that, I mean, they, it's pretty recent, probably within the last five years, that they, they used to require parking downtown. And so they were just running into that issue with the reuse and gentrification.
All the upper stories were just taken, you know.
Of downtown, and, and, you know, that was their big amendment, was to not require parking. Well, I think we've been like that for thirty, forty years, where we haven't required parking downtown. That's probably contributes to the-
Although I hear a lot of complaints about the lack of parking downtown. Just constantly.
Does anyone at the table, or do you, Mike, think that Moscow would be required to build a, or encouraged to build a parking structure anytime soon? I, it's an interesting question, isn't it?
I think we should start with two-hour parking.
How would it be required? Who would require it?
Just take an hour off all those parking zones, and employees would not be able to store their cars on the street. People would have to, you know, use downtown parking differently so that access to businesses, et cetera.
I think three is, three is too much.
Three is too much, absolutely. And I know in the past, there were, you know, council members who depended on that for their business because of the nature of the business. Those businesses aren't even there anymore, and they've actually kind of moved more towards people coming and going with restaurants, et cetera, that are all along the Main Street. So I think that's a much easier solution than building a parking garage, and certainly a lot cheaper. It's worth trying, because there is, you know, there, there is a, I, I used to, to argue with people when they said there was a parking problem downtown, but I've been experiencing it myself quite a bit.
There's a parking problem downtown. At, at times, at times, there's, there's no problem, but there's more often than not now.
And I know building owners really complain about it, so, one of them in my own family.
So, who oversees that, at the time on the meters, Mike, do you know? Who's that?
Well, it'd be the Streets Department, but that is usually a city council decision whether they make a-
And so Walter left, I wanted to get that one in one day.
Big, big sweeping change like that, it's usually city council.
Is that written in, into an ordinance right now, the three-hour parking limit, or?
No, it's just, I, I don't know if they adopt that by resolution or not. I think it's probably by resolution that they have the, the parking changes, because they recently had to go and amend it because of, I think, Taylor's House on, on Sixth and Jefferson. So they used to have three-hour parking there, and, you know, you have residents on Jefferson, and right there, starting at the, you know, the bottom of the hill on Sixth, that wanted to park on street, and it had to go through, I think, council to revise the, the parking map. So I think it's passed by resolution, so council would have to revise the parking, downtown parking map.
But anyway, it's a different way of thinking about parking, but it, I think it does interfere with business health. I don't know if we're ready to just totally give up the ghost on giving up the history.
You two are the two here at the table that are, that are working downtown. Do you, how do each one of you see that, that issue?
Well, we're off, we're off on Jackson Street. We've got lots behind the building on, facing Almond. And even though, you know, we, we use some of the parking to the south of that, too, just because we're, we're kind of full there. I think what, what I've noticed most is in front, on the highway, on, on Jackson there, when they eliminated the parking spaces, when they widened the sidewalk, that's been great. It's, I don't, we don't miss the parking, and I don't know who else along that section of, of Jackson would use it other than Emzie. We don't miss the parking, and it's really nice having that wide sidewalk.
Because it was so narrow before.
It was so narrow. It just, it adds to the transparency, the imagibility, where you can see, you just got a broader field of vision there. I, I don't, I don't know that it's calm traffic a whole lot, but I think it does make you, it certainly makes, when you're waiting to cross the street, to the extent people stop at all, it does make you more visible, because you, there's nothing else there blocking the view. Before, it was just, you know, you had to kind of get out between the cars and hope that somebody saw you among all the metal to, to let you across the street. So, and, you know, in the downtown core, there was, I don't know how many of you listened to any of the Board of Adjustment hearing last night, but, you know, it came up again, all the, the parking downtown. There was a really interesting discussion about the, the conflict of vision between, we want to encourage business downtown, but that means more traffic downtown, more need for parking downtown, so you require more parking downtown, and that eliminates places where you could business is downtown. So you've got this, this weird conflict going on. I mean, you're, you're more on the, I mean, you've got no parking in front of your place, and you run on the alley there, so it might affect you a little differently.
Well, my, my experience is, when, like I said, when you have, when it's busy, it's, it's really, really tough to get a parking place. Having said that, I've always been able to find one so far.
You just have to drive around for a while, yeah.
But with all these, you know, with the church going in, with Sangria going down there, with the apartments we just passed out here, that, that's all scary down the road. I mean, it's, it's already kind of tough, but having to include all those three things down the road, it's going to be, I think it's going to get worse.
I sort of think the experiment we're launched on right now is, is when parking downtown becomes such a pain, does that, is that actually going to translate into people not going downtown? Or is it going to translate into, well, I'm going to go downtown ten minutes earlier, because I'm going to have to walk a quarter mile?
That's what we're hoping for. I mean, oh, it's coming. It's, it's, it's got to get worse with growth. I mean, we're not going to get any, unless we build a garage, we're not going to get any more parking down there.
Well, like John Weber said the other night, too, you know, your downtown being too crowded is actually not that bad of a problem.
Yeah, it's not that bad unless it gets-
Decrease your capacity by, what, thirty-three percent by taking an hour off the parking signs, right there.
Yeah, that's, you know, I, I'm thinking about that, and you're right, it's, it benefits the employees down there, being one. I would have to go out there an hour earlier now every day and do something, but-
And it might get you out of that habit.
And it might, and it might, yeah.
I think, I think we've got a good demonstration right now that, that more, more, less parking downtown doesn't decrease business. You look at the farmer's market. Every Saturday, you close down three blocks and you take away parking. It's packed. There's more people down there than there is every week.
But the one thing that plays into that equation is that the high school kids aren't parking on the same grid on Saturday. So, because that, because that's where a lot of the tra, where people park for the farmer's market. A lot of people walk to the farmer's market, too, I mean, because of the, because they know they want to park.
In St. Andrews, I think it opens up that parking spot, too, on Saturday, across the street from Jackson there. I think that's open for you.
Well, I don't think I've ever not been able to find a spot out here in the city lot on Farmer's Market. You know, that's where I usually park, and then just walk. I mean, this, there'll always be at least a few spots here that are open.
Well, and the, the co-op research, they figure they take about a ten percent hit on sales just because of the parking lot. It's just because it's so hard to get in.
Say that again.
Oh, they, they take about a ten percent hit on retail sales just because of parking, because, you know, the parking lot is often full, and it's so difficult to get another parking spot downtown, you know, at certain times of the day.
And so what do you, a ten percent hit from what?
Business.
People not coming.
People just give up and, and leave.
Yeah, right, ten percent less sales volume, because people can't find a good place to park.
They just don't come in, that's what they're saying.
Well, I, I realize they're saying they don't come. I, I gave up quite a, several of them, a year or two ago, of ever going into that parking lot. So I, I learned to park a block away.
Yeah, and that's what, yeah, leave ten minutes early, and-
I, I think probably what happens with them is that, you know, how often do you swing by the grocery store on your way home from work? And how often do you feel like circling the block three times, because you can't get in and park?
Yeah, there's definitely rush hour floods and lunch hour floods, and, yeah.
But it's, I mean, you know, and then countervailing, too, I'll try to keep this brief, is the way that, you know, it kind of looks like malls might be on their way out. You know, we've got a couple of big anchor stores that are empty now out there. And so that's kind of an odd one where, you know, all the parking and all the re, you know, is, and all the retail is kind of on a downhill slide.
Yeah, we're going to have to have a, a little bus running from the mall to downtown.
Except that downtown is a retail environment really struggles. It's, it's really an entertainment district, more than that.
Good idea, Nelson, I like that.
Yeah, no, I mean, that might not be-
Meeting at the state line, huh?
Downtown trolley go back and forth.
I thought a good point last night was that, you know, if you time yourself parking at the mall and walking to the store you're going to is probably a lot longer than parking a block or two away downtown and walking to your business.
I was thinking about that when you held up the slide earlier, about one hundred feet per parking standards. You know, a hundred feet is like one or two lots in the city. I mean, a block is two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet, and, you know, so.
A lot of it is just perception.
Yeah, it's just people want to be able to park in front of the store they're going to. But, you know, but, and I used to argue with people about that. But now, it, it seems like you're getting pushed farther and farther and farther out of that realm. You have to do quite a bit of searching, but it's, you know, whatever.
What about the whole idea, when I was thinking about the article that's out there that actually shows us, actually comes back to the U.S. with, with Seattle, but the one about shared street, literally. I mean, I've experienced that in Delph, and as a pedestrian, it's almost unnerving, because you have bicycles. It's a, it's a university town, and you have all these students on bicycles all over the place, and you're like, okay. But people kind of adapt, and it really does discourage driving. I mean, people just slow down so much if they're going to drive, because the bicycles can be anywhere. And so, you know, I could envision, if downtown keeps becoming a destination, then eventually that, we have-
that, we have a completely shared street on our Main Street. But, I don't know, how did that one strike you? That one's definitely out of the box the most.
On the one hand, I thought, well, that works in places like, like Europe, where they're used to it, but when you've got America, which is filled with Americans, that might be a little.
But then they bring it to Seattle.
They bring it to Seattle, but then I thought about, there's a lot of residential neighborhoods in Seattle, even in Moscow, where there are uncontrolled intersections, where there's not a stop sign or yield sign. You learn where those are, and you learn to slow down and look, rather than just right on, right on through.
And people walk in, commonly, at least in Fort Russell, and probably Seventh, Eighth Street, that neighborhood, in the middle of the street, too.
Right.
You know, it's, it's better than tripping on sidewalk cracks, and so people walk in the middle of the street, so they become kind of shared streets.
Well, one, yeah, one thing I wondered about that is, so it said they had data that showed that, you know, crashes weren't any more likely, and, but I was wondering how much of that is just because people, you know, in addition to the slowing down, because you don't ever know where somebody's coming from, but how often people in their automobiles would avoid that street like the plague, if they possibly had any option about it. So, it'd be interesting to see how much of that, you know, drop in crashes is just because of a drop in people taking their cars down through there. I mean, in a way, the Main Street is such an island right now, that, you know, I don't think it would actually make that big a difference, if it was a shared street for a couple of blocks. I mean, it'd be, it would be a hell of an experiment on how it affects retail, you know?
But, you know, in a sense, it almost is now, because how many times do you see somebody park middle of the block, get out of their car, and walk across the street, not at the crosswalks, but, so, in a sense, we have almost a shared street on, on Main, and it does work. My neighborhood is a great example, just like you were talking, Fort Russell. I see more people on streets than, with bicycles walking, and we're all mixing all the time, and people just know to slow down, like the article was describing.
And Sixth Street, in the university zone, once you get past, is it Deacon? Or, yeah, yeah, when you get into the core of campus, I mean, the students are going across the street so much in so many places. Well, they've sort of channeled it more, but, you know, if you're in a hurry, you don't go down. I mean, you just, it's, and so that, in a sense, is definitely a shared street.
And I think people coming down Main Street, I can't tell you how many times I've parked and just looked both ways and crossed, and particularly if you're either side of Friendship Square, people are kind of going through there pretty slowly. They're, they're watching, so.
Yeah, and Friendship Square is probably the place where there's the most fluid sort of connection there.
But, but it happens either side of that, in the middle of the street, too. So, in a sense, we're, we're partly there already with, with Main Street. It's a good thing.
Well, it's an interesting comment on human nature, but the safest kind of stairs are ones that are narrow enough that they force you to turn your, your feet a little sideways, because you're, you're much more careful going down.
Interesting. I think, I think some of what that pointed out was that, when you design things, you create expectations, and people will, will live to those expectations. If you've got a controlled intersection with a light, and you've got a certain amount of time to catch that green and turn before it hits yellow, and you have to wait a cycle, you're thinking, this is my right of way, I'm going to get it, I'm going to get in as quick as I can. Whereas, if you're at that same intersection, well, as soon as there's a clear spot, I can go, you're, you're much more relaxed about it. You're not, you're not in such a hurry, because you know you're going to get through.
Yes.
You're not going to have to sit there waiting. You still feel like there's, there's a lot to be said, I think, about the feeling, somebody commented on this, one of the articles, that if you feel like you're moving, it doesn't matter necessarily moving slow. You just feel like you're making progress. So. I think one thing I, I was hoping we'd get out of these readings and part of this discussion was, was, you know, talking about the comprehensive plan, the transportation, we've got the multimodal transportation plan, we've got these readings. As developments come before us, we would give more thought to, to the real mixed, the multimodal transportation kinds of things, that we would put more emphasis. You've got to put in a street, and nobody complains about having to build a street for cars. As soon as you talk about, oh, I've got to put a sidewalk, I've got to put a bike lane, everybody starts to, starts whine.
Giving them equal weight, in a sense.
Yeah, there, yeah, or even the, there was a phrase, one of them, I think they called it the green hierarchy, or something, that in different neighborhoods, it might make more sense to put in more bike lanes in another, but, but still to consider that. If, I think the last one was the peekaboo one out in the, in the northeast section. There was the discussion about, well, a bike lane versus parking, and how we do all that. But in a residential neighborhood like that, now that you've got a school going in there in the future, that's a great place to start thinking about, well, okay, how much do we want to balance on-street parking and traffic, car traffic, versus bike traffic, and accommodating that, and accommodating wider sidewalks in there, because you're going to have, you want to encourage more people on, on foot. There are going to be more people on foot anyway. You want to accommodate them and encourage that kind of transportation.
Right, good point.
So, and back to the discussion about whether Third Street's an arterial or a collector, whichever you designate it. Okay, but what kind of transportation is it going to accommodate? It makes sense to have, it's the most bike-friendly street going, going east-west. So, okay, let's, let's think about that going forward, and not just say, arterial, it's going to be cars.
How about traffic calming at every intersection down Third? So, I mean, I'm not being completely facetious. I mean, I used to live in Seattle, and, and I know there's a whole section between, in the north part of the city, between Lake City Way and I-5 corridor, there, there's a traditional gridded neighborhood in there, and people used to cut through all the time to get over to I-5. Now, there is traffic calming at every single intersection through that whole neighborhood. You can go through it, but you're going to, it's kind of, in a sense, it becomes a shared street, because it definitely keeps people from zipping down. And so, you let people move through, but they're going to move through more slowly. And in a way, that's what the junior high, the interventions in front of the junior high are in effect, a traffic coner, you know?
I think that's what both Portland and Seattle have done, in their near residential neighborhoods.
All over the gridded neighborhoods.
Roundabouts in every street. Consequently, running through a residential neighborhood rapidly.
You can't do it.
Can't be done, because you-
But you move, you flow.
You keep moving, as you say.
Yeah, and, and it certainly makes it friendlier for bicycles and pedestrians to not have traffic whizzing by. So, I don't know. I mean, I think, any other points that, I thought it was interesting that, that it was the National Association of Realtors who published this article on, on finding, on rethinking required parking, because, you know, that one was, any other? So, Greg, did we get anything out of what you were hoping for, or not exactly?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
It's very encouraging to see that, that we're largely on the same page about, about that kind of stuff. Because I think that's, these bigger cities are doing all these great things, but they're kind of retrofitting. We're small enough that as we, as we grow and develop, we're not, we're not overly committed to one way of doing things. We can pivot pretty readily on, on how we accommodate different modes of transportation in new developments as we, as we grow, and, and with the infill, too, so.
Right, and we can experiment in little areas, just to, you know, the one, on a slightly different subject with the, what gets people walking, and the imageability and transparency, I agree with that, but also, a lot of studies show that block size and frequency of intersections also contribute to walkability. People like to walk downtown because they have lots of choices every three-hundred feet. They can turn a different direction. And if you're just kind of channeled into one chute, it gets monotonous. So, you think about walking out Third Street towards the mall, and it would get pretty tedious after a while, because the distance between intersections and opportunities to take a different route are, are much more. So, getting those, a more frequency of intersections, I mean, you know, I, I know a bunch of academic articles that really address that in urban design, but, in urban morphology, but it's something I thought about when I read this. This is part of the equation, but not all of it. And we have nice block sizes in Moscow, you know, in, in the more traditional parts of town, anyway, so.
I'd never thought about that before, but I had to go for like a three-quarter mile walk in Salt Lake once.
Salt Lake's hard.
Yeah.
It's hard, the streets are too wide, the blocks are so long. Yeah, and so when they said it was a walking-friendly city, I was thinking, I remember being walking for hours, but you kind of, ugh.
You know what Salt Lake's now doing with those wide streets, is putting in, the rail is in more places, so they have-
They're set up for multimodal.
Yeah, they've got a rail. And many of those wide streets, they've decided to park right in the middle of the street. So, they end up with some diagonal parking with a lane on each side. And so, they do have, with that space, they've gotten pretty creative. I have now been a twenty-year Salt Lake City person, effort, I've been going there now for twenty years, and it's pretty shocking to see the things, the creative ways that they're using those wide streets. There's no doubt that the blocks are long, and walking is, is-
Well, it makes me think that our, our traditional street designations, like we saw on the map, don't make sense anymore, in a sense. I mean, if we're going to really think about multimodal. And I wonder if there are any articles that start to address that issue, or, or topically, what do you think, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What do you think is coming up, and, you know, that we should be thinking about in terms of reading, to help us with more of the comprehensive plan, or other dimensions we haven't hit with it?
Well, we have chapters on economic development, you know?
Oh, good, something simple.
Anybody want to come up with something?
These were good. These, this is, yeah, I enjoyed them a lot.
Yeah, when we, when we get to, because you're the sort of airport expert guy. When we get to economic development, that's what, it'd be fun to talk about. I've been saying recently that, don't worry about Moscow growing. We don't have water, we don't have a highway, and we don't have an airport. So, why would anybody come here?
We have whites are adding what?
Now, the airport, the airport may be improving.
It's a big, a big deal. You know, and another intersection of economic development is art, and our community has a very substantial history in art, and there's a, there's a really significant link between economic development and being an arts community. So, that might be something that we could kind of tie in.
Oh, interesting.
And just looking at what you were showing earlier tonight about public art, we started that many years ago, even when the art department was a part-time job, and was a little controversial initially, but it, it's really gained some popularity. And, so anyway, I just, I think that tying arts and, and economic development is an interesting thing to kind of view the community in a broad sense.
That's a good idea. Okay. Well, have we, any other comments?
Unrelated question. We talked a few meetings ago about a couple of summer opportunities. I think one might have been in Sandpoint Court Lane, one in Seattle, for attending some planning convention, many things. Any information on those?
No, let's see. I wonder which one, let's see.
The Priest Lake Conference, and beginning of June.
Oh, right, right. Yeah. That's the inland-
Empire chapter.
Empire chapter. So, what opportunities do we, oh, yeah, that was right, when we were talking about budget, probably, we were trying to budget in some, I was trying to remember the conversation, but, yeah. Do you know other conferences that are on the horizon, in terms of-
Uh, we, yeah, in October is the Idaho Chapter of the American Planning Association. We're in Ketchum this year. That's usually October, we think Brock, ninth, tenth, around that time.
Yeah. And we also had talked about bringing somebody in, you know, I, I don't know if we have the budget to fund people to go to Ketchum.
It's expensive, I'm slicing.
But Priest Lake is a good, I've been to that conference a couple of times, and that's, it's a good one.
We could send somebody to Ketchum, but they'd have to sleep in their car.
And they'd have to.
Pay to get them down there, but that's-
I talked about the, there is going to be a conference in Seattle first of early May, and I said I would report on it, and I now see that I don't think I'm going to be able to go, but, and it, now that Seattle is getting to be priced right along with San Francisco and New York, it makes it less fun to try and find a room. But there is a conference in early May, I think, fifth and sixth of May, the Congress of New Urbanism, and they only rarely comes to the West. So, it is something that the new urbanists are, have argued for pedestrian-style communities more than, more than most. And planning used to just be presumed that it was about how to get cars from A to B, and they've really changed that. So, but on the other hand, it's not a cheap conference to go to, and it's in Seattle, so.
You can stay in a hostel.
What's that?
I said that you can always stay in a hostel.
You can.
It's very, it's very new urbanist.
I've probably stayed in more hostels than, than you have, so I, I, I can. When I used to take students to New York, had to stay in a hostel, because they couldn't afford anything else, and twenty-two dollars a night. It's a different lifestyle.
Yeah, there, there used to be some right around Pike Place Market, I remember.
There still is.
See, second totally unrelated thing, I have to go off to Nevada to work, starting May ninth, and probably be gone for about a month. And I'm really looking forward to the fact that I'll be at least thirty miles from cell phone service, let alone internet.
Oh, okay.
So, I'll be gone.
Okay, well, have a good time. Well, thank you, everybody. I guess we'll, we'll try to do some research on, on potential articles on those topics, and economic development and art, and maybe street designation, too, if there's alternative thinking on how streets should be designated, rather than just adopting what the state sends down to us, just finding out what the trends are. If, I don't know if there's any out there, but we'll look for it. Yeah, okay, well, thank you.